Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee Meeting of Thursday, October 11th, 2018. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone's so happy this evening.
It's the weather.
Yeah, it's the weather.
It's the weather.
Okay, before we get into the business, this evening's business, I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of September 27th, 2018, and acceptance of warrants 16, P-19, and 15-V-19.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I do also just want to mention one thing. We had a teacher pass away, a former teacher, pass away recently. Malcolm Frazier, Mal, who everybody, did you know Mal? Because he was also a substitute.
Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Frazier.
I bet you would recognize him.
He passed away on September 28th. And I just wanted to acknowledge that because he was, he was actually voted Teacher of the Year in 2006. And he was also inducted into the Mass Hall of Fame for Science Educators, which is pretty impressive. He worked at Triton first and then came to Georgetown. So over forty-plus years of service to, you know, children's education, which is pretty impressive. And I know my children had him.
Oh, they did, okay.
And they were really saddened to hear about his passing, so.
It's nice of you to acknowledge it. I did go to the wake and they had, his children had put up copies of, he was, the yearbook was dedicated to him one year. And then when he retired, the blueprint, newspaper had done a really nice article about him. So, you know, I said to them, "That's what it's all about, right? Making a difference." And for people, often teachers don't get that kind of acknowledgement, so he was pretty special to the kids.
Yeah, it sounds like it. I know on Facebook there were, under the obituary, a lot of the Georgetown kids had mentioned how much he had impacted them while he was here in Georgetown. So I just want to give my condolences on behalf of all of us, to the family.
Thank you, that's great.
Okay, moving on, we have Chloe here to talk about what's going on in school.
Well, first I'll start with sports. Everyone's doing pretty well. Golf is actually doing really well. They just won against Linfield yesterday, two days ago.
Wow.
And so they say they're on their way to state, so I hopefully they get there. Homecoming.
Home to you.
So it's not tomorrow, which it was supposed to be, just because we have PSATs on Saturday. So we're on the playoff schedule again, and so we'll know, like, the home game we're gonna pick when the playoff schedule comes out. And so it was gonna be the 26th of October, November 2nd and November 9th. But November 3rd is SAT, and that's also Chicago, they're going there, so it's not gonna be November 2nd. So I really hope that's not the home game. So the 26th of October or the 9th we're looking at.
Okay.
So, we will see. Other than that, seniors, we're getting close, I think, early action for most people are either, like, October 15th if you're going down south, or November 1st. And so that's fun and exciting, stressful. Oh, NHS, we're getting ready for the auction, that's gonna be in November, so we have to bring all our auction items next week to our meeting, so we're getting ready for that. And the Pomodori night for the Plymouth State went really well, and I think got a good amount of money to help with the cost.
Oh, good.
Yeah, sorry not to be able to make that. I do enjoy going to those dinners.
Yeah.
So you're gonna go to, down to Plymouth State?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
And unless we make it to the playoffs, but for good hockey, but.
Okay, well hopefully you'll make it to the playoffs.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. And then you're getting measured soon for your cap and gongs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's exciting.
October 17th?
Yep, next week.
That's exciting.
I know.
This year's gonna fly by, Chloe.
I know. And we have to hand in our, like, baby pictures and our senior pictures by Halloween.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
Our paragraph and everything, so.
Yeah.
Lots of senior stuff.
That's exciting.
I noticed on Twitter that when you mentioned golf.
Do it tonight, aren't they?
Yeah, Duett Purcell and Kyle Tor-
Turgston?
No.
No, Horchewski.
Horchewski are competing in the Cal Golf Tournament today, so hopefully they'll.
Awful weather to do that.
I know, horrible weather, but hopefully they'll do well, yeah.
And where was that at?
I'm not sure, it doesn't say the country club, but, you know, it's a big honor to be able to,
Oh, that's great.
You know, to make it to the Cals. They're a tough competition.
Good. Are you doing a catwalk for cancer again this year?
Yeah, we're planning to. So we're gonna start to talk to stores soon, see if they'd be willing to donate more, and trying to find a date, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was fun. Hope to do it this year.
Who would be organizing that?
Student council.
Okay.
So, yeah, all of us will be organizing that.
Yeah, you did a great job last year, that was fun.
There's a nice article in the paper today on the history class that's doing the voter registration. I'll put it in your next packet because it wasn't, but I read it online.
Yeah, they came into our class today, they have these cute little shirts.
Yes.
But I want a shirt because I like it a lot.
Yeah.
But they came into every, like, yeah, English class, and they showed us how to vote, or registered to vote, so.
Yep. And the junior class is working on a project that they asked for my support on, and I asked them to also get Dan's and Margaret's support. But they want to offer free volunteer babysitting on Election Day for any parents that, you know, wanna come, and they have to bring their children just so they can vote. They'll watch the kids while the parents, you know, go in to vote, so that, you know, I love those kind of things, when kids think of an idea and then they organize around to take the initiative and do it. So, you know, Margaret and I talked about, we have to make this happen for them, you know, like, give them a space where they can, where they can work. And I noticed they did follow up and email you today to get a meeting to talk about the logistics.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's a great experience for, for kids to take that kind of initiative, I think. Do what we can to support all that, all the time.
Well, thank you, Chloe.
Thank you, Chloe.
Okay, we have, this is Ms. McGuire here. Mandy, come on up. Camp Kiev, this is your baby now?
Yes. I didn't get to go last year, so.
Yeah, well, you had a good reason.
Yeah.
I did have a good reason. Are you gonna go this year?
I don't believe so, just because.
No, that would be, yeah, that's a lot.
I'm from there, so I get to go there a lot, anyway.
Well, you are from there?
Yes. Yeah, right there. Well, they're in Noburro, but I'm from Janmarscata.
Oh, yeah, that's right there.
I didn't know that.
What's that, that great little?
Red.
Reds.
Oh, Reds in Muscati.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right across, right before the bridge.
Right, right before the bridge, yeah.
But what is it? What is Reds?
It's a lobster.
Oh.
Super famous lobster.
Yeah, the line's always around the corner.
Yeah, always around the corner, yeah.
What a quaint little place it is, though.
Super small.
Yeah, I didn't know that's where you were from. You fit right into the city life. Okay, so what's going on with Kiev?
So we have, we have five chaperones that are planning on going. We are saying about $200 a student right now. Let's see. We are getting ready to get the buses.
Yeah.
If Cheryl has not already.
The transportation cost is crazy.
Unbelievable.
Five thousand dollars.
Well, Tiffany Cahill came to our faculty meeting the other day for PTA and was saying how they are, they wanted to give money for field trips.
Support it, yeah.
So I spoke to Cheryl O'Leary about it. And so we were thinking either Kiev or Cedar Dale at the end of the year. And so we're, I'm gonna email Tiffany and see what she thinks about it.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
So Mandy's actually here, kind of representing the eighth grade team, because Pat Core is out on his family leave. And so Mandy graciously agreed to step up and be the, the team leader, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, that, that, you know, that's not, well, that's good, maybe you'll like it.
I really enjoy it, actually.
It's nice to have a little shared leadership, but I do want to make sure that, you know, Mandy gets credit for that, because she, she really did step up and help us out.
Thank you.
Mandy, what, how do you pronounce your last name?
McGuire Stirk.
Stirk?
Yes.
You'll always be Mandy McGuire tonight.
Yes, that's right.
Yes. It's all right. Sean appreciates that, I'm sure.
Now, that was always a great trip.
Yes.
Chloe, I'm sure you remember that, right? The eighth grade trip?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was really fun.
Kids have a good time, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
She asks.
Does anybody have any questions about the trip? It's been done before. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the eighth grade trip to Camp Kiev from May 21st to the 30th of 2019, as presented by Mandy McGuire Stirk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So much to see everybody.
Look with the baby. Did you have a big first birthday party?
Yeah, a little one.
Yeah?
We had friends that went, like, really all out, like, fifty people gourmet cupcakes. So we saw that, and we're like, "We're just gonna do a small sesame sweet one."
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Nice to see you.
Bye-bye, thanks, Mandy.
See you later.
Thank you.
I know. Mike's pictures, he lets us put things in.
Yep, so we have some surplus books. I love the pictures. Right?
Yeah.
Look at this one.
They serve their time.
Yep. That's good, we get our money's worth.
Mm-hmm.
So the books are from high school, from the seventies and eighties, they're in poor condition, have not been used in many years.
A lot has changed since then. And we're trying to, you know, purge, you know, because we've got needs for space, so.
Are these sitting at Pearlie right now?
My understanding.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to declare the numerous books from the Pearlie School and the Middle High School as surplus, and then we will remove them from inventory. So moved. Second, questions on that?
Yeah, where did they go?
Where what? I'm sorry, Susan.
Where did they go?
Where did they go?
Well, we have a couple different things. We can dispose of them if there really is no value. But we often have book companies that we work with that may take books overseas. These are probably a little bit old to do that with. So my guess is these will be basically recycled. No, it's a, it's a very good question, because a lot of people probably wonder, you know, well, you know, they're old books, but are they, are they antiques? Is there any value? So, so I will confirm that with Mike, but that's my understanding, because there could be some books of, some value to historians, but.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. We have a presentation this evening, so we're gonna have Principal Richards come on up. And Colin, do, well, Colin, do you wanna?
He's welcome to come.
Come up too?
He really helped out on the visit, so it's up to you, but it's really.
Come up instantly, then listen, just gonna make sure that he's able to get into his presentation.
Presentation, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's what we were discussing.
I.
I'll get the AV setup, too.
I will admit, I didn't go through a lot of this.
That's okay.
Because.
I just got it, it's just kind of crazy, a couple of days. Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot, but I thought you should have the whole report.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that.
As opposed to just the summary, you know, and you can read it at your leisure.
Yep.
And then I saw the overview, and it's like, I highlighted.
Yeah.
I highlighted was in the overview. Well, that's the way it should be, babe. I just was going through, I, one piece at a time, and. It did work. There you go, guys.
Always bring Colin.
Always bring Colin. That is our motto. Colin or Mike, right?
Yeah. So, good evening. I'm gonna give the NASC Decennial Report overview. This is not in detail, and I believe that you'll eventually, or if not already, have the report in great detail.
Yeah, they have it.
But what I've done is I've melded in the recommendations into a theme, and the commendations into a theme, so I won't go through every one of them and bore you, but you do have that. But there are themes that pass through each one of these, and I just wanted to highlight it because the work that's being done at Georgetown Middle High School is worth bragging about. And the report overview is worth saying that. I have been on probably ten accreditation visits as a chair and assistant chair, worked with schools that have seventy-eight recommendations. Happy to say we have about seventeen or eighteen to work on.
Wow.
So that gives you a comparison of what other schools receive in their reports. So that doesn't mean we don't have work to do, we do have work to do. But I hope that the overview gives you an idea or a flavor, and for the families at home, where we landed with the report. And I'll be presenting the report to the faculty at the next faculty meeting. So I thought it'd be worthwhile to first understand the accreditation process. It's a ten-year decennial accreditation visit, and we are always, for lack of a better word, knee-asking all ten years. We're not prepping just the year before or two years before. We're always working on the standards, incorporating in everything that we do. But when the visit happens, and that's what I'll focus on here with this slide, is what is the visit like? And I think that's a mystery to a lot of folks, what happens for those three days, and how can they come to these conclusions? So this, I prepared this slide here to give you an overview of the, the evidence-based conclusions and how they came to those conclusions. And you can see by the bullets up here that is a team of professionals, and I say educational professionals, professionals in the education field, guidance counselors, administrator, teachers, librarians, and they specifically fill those roles. So each one of them is filled, not heavily filled, with a librarian, so several librarians, or it is well-balanced out through professionals through the education field. They, I've been on these visits, and they are pretty powerful when you do a six-hour shadowing of twelve students for a half a day, and the storytelling, and students tell everything. That's where the evidence lie, so that's always pretty powerful. The classroom visits, too, to see instruction in action, to see if the curriculum that they claim that they teach is actually being taught, and that's one of the standards. Tours of facilities, down to the bowels of the building, to the rooftop. Meeting with twenty-eight teachers, asking specific questions to prompt to the standards themselves, and group meetings with parents, school officials, students, district administrators. So you can see the, the flavor of what goes into a visit from Sunday to Wednesday when they come. It's rather intense, and there's very little sleep.
They also met with the school committee.
And they usually do, and they want to, because they want to get to your perception, flavor, or experience, if you have children in the district, of what it's like. So it's a very rich experience, it's very condensed, and by the time they leave on Wednesday, they're pretty accurate. So there are seven standards. There are core standards, or I should say the teaching and learning standards, and then there are the supporting standards below that. So the main focus is on the four standards at the top, and then the supporting standards down below. One is not more important than the other. The foundation is set with the four, and then it's supported by the three, is the best way I can describe that. That's usually how we describe it on our visits. Getting into the first standard. The first standard is core values, beliefs about learning. This is a foundational standard, because everything you do is based on the core beliefs of the institution. Your program and studies is based on your core beliefs about learning. Your handbook, and it goes on and on. This is probably one of the more important standards. They're all important, but this is a truly a foundation to your culture and who you are as an institution. And you can see here that they complimented us, or a commendation, with the faculty involvement in the 21st century skills and curriculum, instruction, assessment, and policies, their involvement. Teacher voice, faculty voice, staff voice, parent voice, student voice is important through the whole theme of this. But establishing the core values and beliefs is very important, because it represents everyone in the community. One of the recommendations that they had is to create a formal process, and this is pretty common in schools, that they'll revisit their core values and beliefs every four years, or maybe a year or two before the visit to get it in. What they're looking for is a cycle rotation, and typically a three-year cycle rotation to revisit your core values and beliefs. Doesn't mean you have to reinvent it every three years, but you do need to discuss it and see if we're on target with what is happening in the community, society, and to see if we're on track. So I guess the best way to describe it is check the temperature every three years, and that's an easy cycle to get on. So they're looking for that, and they're also looking for measurable criteria to see if you are hitting your standards. Most schools, to give you an idea of what they do, is they incorporate that into comments on report cards, that's one way. Rubrics is another way other schools have done it, but they would like us to take a look at the formal cycle and the measurable criteria, and how we know that we're on target. The second standard is with curriculum. And with curriculum, the thing, the first bullet that they have an accommodation is the time that's been allocated for teachers to work together with technology, aligning curriculum, all of the things that help us stay focused and on course on what we're doing. And time is so valuable that Georgetown Middle High School should be complimented, or I should say Georgetown School District should be complimented on allocating the appropriate time for people to come together to talk about curriculum and instruction, and that's very rare. And that's a tough one with contracts and negotiation and a limited school day. But that's one of the things they complimented us on. And then the other thing is what we say in writing is being taught. They complimented us on what we actually do. So your written curriculum is actually being the taught curriculum, and that's always not the case, and revisiting that, and the time to revisit that.
So Dan, there's sort of two things to highlight there, right? One is that there's actually built into the schedule.
Yes.
So there is team time, but there's also time for departments to meet at the high school. That, I've never seen that before. I told you that when we, when I came here. And, you know, when budgets are tight, sometimes you're tempted to, you know, sort of figure out how to, that might go away, but we've never taken it away. So I'm glad that they noticed that. And I think the other thing is the, all the work we did with Atlas. You know, the investment we made with Atlas. When the team came, they could actually, you know, go in, look at the unit, and then be able to see it in action. So that, that whole structure and framework for Atlas has really helped us be consistent, I think.
Yeah.
So I just mentioned that, because that, we made an investment in it, in that, and obviously it paid off.
I recall when the school committee met with them, they did ask a couple of questions about Atlas. Did you recall that?
Yeah. Yeah, so it was great that you, you had learned about it, you had, you could speak to it.
Right.
That's great.
The second bullet I'm really excited about and proud about is the co-curricular activities for students, because I strongly believe that as a school, we have to offer extracurricular activities for students beyond the curriculum, clubs, activities, sports, things to be involved in. That's part of building kids, is what we're doing, and it's just not the, the classroom setting delivering the curriculum. We're building citizens, and we are doing this through our clubs and activities and sports, and they complement it. So I'm really proud about the second bullet that we're, what we're doing. Proud of all of it, but that one sticks out in my mind. Again, the third bullet is the district personnel and time and resources to support the professional development. This falls right in Colin's wheelhouse that he is delivering. He's providing a, a rich professional development opportunities for our faculty and staff that are on target, and they noticed that. Recommendation down at the bottom, they recommend that our written curriculum should also incorporate our 21st century learning skills. A lot of it is happening, it's just not being recorded through Atlas or being documented. I can name a couple of classes I popped into today, and 21st century skills are being taught by default, we just have to bring it to the front of the brain and record it, and Atlas is what they're asking for.
So each individual teacher would then go in and?
We would take a look at our 21st century skills and take a look at the curriculum, and which ones do they hit upon? And that just takes some time and reflection, and then inserting it. They like to see what's in writing is being taught. They saw it taught, but it's not in writing, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's the way.
Exactly. So the next one is instruction. And instruction is really the heart of the teaching and what they're doing. And a couple of key points I wanted to make about instruction is that the common planning time, as Carol mentioned, I want to mention that common planning time is very difficult to schedule in a small school, or a scheduled period. It mentions also in here opportunities for students to take a variety of courses. That is not easy, because they become what's called singletons. You can't run two courses of something, you have to run the one because of resources, and that is very difficult to schedule kids into. The fact that we're able to offer it, one, and two, to get kids into the class, as many as we can, is the art of scheduling in June, July, and August. And they recognize that, and they, they definitely complimented us on that. So the flexibility of class offerings for students to engage, and inquiry, and problem solving, and to demonstrate higher-order thinking skills, and that's what we want to see. Higher-order thinking skills, we want them to stretch their knowledge with problem solving, because that's what the real world is, and it's just not memory-based. I read a really interesting article the other day, and what should you teach that can be Googled? What you shouldn't teach that can be Googled should be thrown out. So it's problem solving that you can't Google, it's demonstrating higher-order thinkings that can't be Googled. Those are the 21st century skills of teaching. So if you can Google it, you should throw it out.
Right.
Because they have a computer with them, we all have computers with us. So I thought that was interesting. So I'm happy to see that in the accommodations, recommendations. They're looking for more differentiated instruction to appeal to all learners, which is always a challenge, because when you have twenty-something kids, you have twenty-something different learners in front of you. But we do have to keep that in mind and differentiate our instruction as teachers. There's a moment to do the PowerPoint, then switching over to the group activity to develop social skills, and think, pair together, then share activities, getting up and moving, so that the learning styles, the learning is to all modalities, just not two or three.
Introducing the multimodal learning wherever possible.
Yeah. Appealing to all learning modalities, which is a tough one to do, that's the art of teaching.
Because some teachers are in like the, the mode of standing in front of the class like a lecturer, you know, and then to be able to get out of that mode and, you know, add in a PowerPoint, or, you know, get into groups.
Get participation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will say that's the, the minority of our teaching at the Georgetown Middle High School.
Oh, sure.
That, the majority of our teaching is mixing it up a bit. I'm happy to see this week, classes went outside rather than sit in the classroom. That environment changes everything. Kids are around the school doing scavenger hunts, just in a more thoughtful, you know, in a more complex way than just inventorying things. The voter registration is another perfect example of differentiating the learning environment. That's a project-based learning. So we have teachers that are taking risks, and that's always been my theme, and then take a risk in your class, and it's okay if it doesn't work, you'll get back up and you'll do it again. So we do have that happening, we just need to do more of it.
Yeah, I think that's their point, is that it's not that it's not happening, it's that it just needs to happen more often. But, you know, there are days when a lecture is the right instruction for whatever it is you're teaching. But you just don't want to do it every day, right? There should be opportunities for, you know, and did comment, comment on formative assessment. Because as you're collecting information on what kids know, then you know what to do with the kids who don't. You should know what to do with the kids who don't know it and what to do to challenge the kids who already do. That's the art. So it really depends on a daily basis based on what you've learned. That's why teaching is a hard job. It's not, it's not like you can just go in and.
That's why it's really an art.
It tells you what to do. You have to, you have to use what you know about the kids to be able to figure out how best to get it to them.
This week too, I was pretty impressed with, one of the new teachers at the high school had talked to the kids about just a bullying situation that, I think it was an article that he read. And it, and it got to him and he explained it to the kids and the kids were really impacted by it. So for that class, what they did, and this was a math class, they wrote letter, they wrote notes on sticky pads and to give the middle schoolers like confidence, like, like a upbeat message. And the kids were so happy. They, they went down there and they were like posted them all around the school so the middle schoolers could see it. And I just think it's great that he, because that, to me, that's just as important as a math day, you know? And, and the fact that the kids really enjoyed it and they were like, you know, we really, we think we made a difference because those middle schoolers that are having trouble could see these nice notes that, you know, from kids that may have already, you know, went through what some of those kids were through and to tell them, you know, they'll get through it. So I was really impressed with that. I could have sent that teacher an email.
And that's our social emotional initiative in action, those small things.
This is great.
So the next one, the next standard is the assessment of and for student learning. And their accommodation, the accommodation theme, again, I'm giving you an overview, of the data driven decisions. And I'm happy to see that data is driving many of our decisions, but it's not exclusively driving our decisions. There is hard data that we look at and I think Colin will come up here and show you some hard data on that, I'm cast, but there's also soft data. And the soft data is the voice of students, the voice of faculty and staff. And you have to weigh the two to get a feel for it. Whenever you're in one camp, you're losing a piece of it. So there's a strong belief that hard data, there's definitely a need for it, but there's that soft data as well that we bring to the table. So I'm happy that they recognize that we're well balanced in that. They speak mostly of hard data. But also there's a theme throughout the report of listening and voice and increasing that voice throughout the school. So recommendations, they are looking for consist, consistent assessments, all learning expectations. Our learning expectations as a school are happening, but they're happening in pockets throughout the school. So how do we assess our learning expectations consistently throughout the schools, what they're asking us to do? Rather than rely on pockets or pieces. So we're, we need to work on that to make sure that our learning expectations are actually being measured in a consistent fashion so that we could use that data to guide us to see whether we're meeting our core values and beliefs. And that's a good recommendation.
And I think if I remember correctly, the school had been working on that. I just don't think that work had been completed yet. You know, and that's what happens when the self-study comes in, you are where you are. But I know that there was a lot of discussion in departments about, you know, who was responsible for what objectives. But I think that there are some of them that everybody's responsible for and just figuring out like what is your, what is your piece? And if you're, if one is, you know, you write clearly, right? You, you want to make sure that everybody's looking at writing in a similar way. As opposed to, you know, we all look at the writing kids do in a different way and score it differently and, you know, you're always going to have some subjectivity in everything that you do, but I think they're looking at it more systemic. I think that would be a word that, just approach to these learning expectations.
So the next standard deals with the school culture and leadership. The one thing that came out of accommodations was the security at the middle high school. And I think we're all aware of, you know, the, the entrance, the new entrance to the school, the double buzzer, the exterior doors to say something app, the raptor, for the sake of the audience, I'm going to list them all. The raptor ID at the main office for background checks, the fly sense in the bathrooms, the gaggle. Analytical, working with Google to make sure that kids are texting and emailing correctly, you know, in appropriate way. All of those things they recognized and they commented that. And that's something that you normally don't see on a report like this and to this degree. But they recognized that we were in the process of it. And also when they do come in, I want to remind you that it's a snapshot of the moment. It's not what you're going to do or what's happening this summer. So these were all, thankfully, were all in some kind of stage for them to reference, which was a true reflection of the school. So I'm happy that they didn't miss any of that because there is a lot going on as far as student safety. Recommendation, they ask for a protocol to be communicated out to parents and students of how to go about things. There seems to be a lot of confusion on where you go when you have a concern in a class. It was scattered. It's probably the best word I could use. One thing we introduced to the students this year, which addresses this, is a protocol for when you have a concern in a class. You go to the teacher first and if you don't feel comfortable, you can have the guidance counselor work with you or go with you. And then from there, the parents and we worked with the students at the class meetings on that and showed it to them and emphasized that. So they're looking for more formal protocols on how to go about things to make things happen. And also voices. They're looking for making sure that all voices are included in these decisions of establishing core values, beliefs and anything that, you know, builds the school culture. So that is school culture and leadership. And the final one is the school resources for learning.
Next to the last one, right?
The final standard, I should say. No, it's next to the last one. School resources for learning. They mentioned as a common theme in here, the coordinated and direct intervention strategies for all students, which is good to see all students and not just special ed students or regular students, but they identified all students through this and the guidance department's support of all students. And that's just not the guidance counselor, but as school psychologists, our adjustment counselor, working together in a productive way. So they've recognized that as accommodation. One thing they did recommend for the school resources for learning is to make sure that there's a curriculum for guidance seven through twelve. And I met with the guidance department head and we've made that part of their goals this year to make sure that a curriculum is written for all grades and that they're visiting all students. And so they're in the process of doing that and meeting and that their goal is to have that complete by the end of this year.
We've talked about that here.
Yep, they recognize that. And so that's something that, like I said, the guidance department has made part of their SMART goals. The last one is community resources for learning. And community resources for learning is a little tricky.
Don't we know it? We're on warning for this one.
Through my personal experience on these visits, it's, it, it's a little tricky because of perceptions of what communities need and no one has enough. That's the thing. No one has enough. So you gotta please put us on warning for community resources for learning. I've heard that a lot in all the visits. What they identified that we have adequate funding, more, we use our funding appropriately. A target was a key word that stood in my mind in order to make sure that we have the wide range of programs in our program of studies, which is very diversified. We have sufficient professional support, professional development, support for students and also technology, our one to one program and sufficient equipment. So they, we don't have an abundance of, so please don't look at the accommodation of you have a lot. And I think everyone knows that. But they have recognized that we're very targeted with our funding is probably the best.
It's a good way to put it. Yes.
So they recognize that and their accommodation was to make sure that we have long range projections. And I would agree with this recommendation for book adoptions. When you introduce a new course and you need a book, that funding can range up to $26,000. And do we have a plan to put our books, and I'm using books as in it, well, they mentioned textbooks. A department book cycle that we must develop and fund and just rotate our departments through so that we have updated materials. Books aren't the only resource, but it is a foundational resource. And they saw a lack of long range funding for large items like textbooks or large expense at the school. That is, I'm not, I don't like the word quick fix, but it's a fix in the moment.
We have a, we have a district curriculum revision cycle, but we don't have a, a school textbook.
Textbooks, yeah. And they specifically mentioned textbooks and they just said large expenses next to that.
And it does seem too, when it comes down to like the budget time, when, when it is difficult. We've seen a couple of them, those lines.
We take it out of choice.
Yeah.
At one time, expenses, that's what we've been doing.
But we're surplusing books from the seven.
Yes.
That was not planned, but that's a great example, yes.
Yeah, you just, you know, you want to make sure that it's not just one department.
Correct.
That gets all the new textbooks. You want it to be evenly spread out by department and they all need.
And you have to prioritize them based on.
Well, most of them anyway.
Needs them the most. So it's part of it too.
Right, and the way the curriculum is developed.
Uniforms in sports.
I was just going to say.
It's the same thing. It's like, how do you, how do you really cycle through your resources based on need and not based on want?
And it seems like it's more of like a, a town, not issue, but idea that we need to plan with the town when we think about budget and, yeah.
One other point I want to make is just not a new book. I've asked the department heads to think about new courses for next year for the program of studies. The, the first response was, well, we can never get a book for it, so why would we plan for it? And I, I cringe because they want to introduce new courses, but they've been tooled over the years that it won't be there to support it. So I've asked them to think broadly and imagine and to propose new courses. And I have one on the table now and we'll deal with the funding of the books later in the year. But I have an AP economics course that's being proposed and I would love to see that at the school. And that's just an example of the, the long range funding for books suppressing the creativity of our department heads of expanding our opportunities for kids. That's probably the best way I could put it. So if we can think beyond just a book, but also imagination and building courses that kids will really enjoy, I could retool them. No, no problem there. But I've asked them to put that aside and imagine.
So does it have to be based on a book? Can they come up with curriculum that is not just text based?
The answer is yes and no. And I always hate that answer, but when you talk about an AP course, you need the book. And the book can only be for 10 years and it has to be replaced. I haven't done inventory on that.
Sure.
So that's an example where a book is a must, but all courses should be blended.
Yes.
But they should have a foundation as well. A book I look as a foundation of a resource, but everything else comes off of that usually.
And where does grants come in with this? Like, could the teachers investigate like the, like a grant that would financially assist them with this?
Grants are always an option. I just don't know which ones for certain things. And for the AP course, I'm not quite sure. You know, where she would look for that.
But in general, like if, like if a teacher does want to, you know, put forth something.
I think the college board offers.
College.
Because I remember at one point, the college board, because I was a grant person. So the college board was trying to encourage more, you know, AP courses being created. So they, you know, the grants weren't super expen, you know, you didn't get a lot of money, but enough so that you could get the course up and running. So I, that's just a place you could maybe check for AP is the college board. Because they really want to have more AP classes and more kids accessing AP. Not just sort of the kids that, you know, are the, the top academic achievers who want to take the, take all those courses.
Grants are a great, great resource, but back to the recommendation, they're looking for a sustainable.
Yeah, you're right.
So I think grants complement the sustainable.
No, that's right.
How does, you made comments and, and principal before about the challenges and challenges of scheduling and, and the building and all of that. How does that relate to, I mean, I love new courses, but when you're already, when your hands are already somewhat tied on scheduling and resources and all those other things, I mean, an AP econ course sounds great. But do you have enough bodies to put in chairs and a classroom and a teacher? Like, how do you balance the new class versus the, the old class, for lack of a better word?
So the way I explain to the department has is, you know, imagine new courses. Not all new courses are new funding. They may replace an old course that has low enrollment and then we're just swapping out a prep for a teacher. So some are budget neutral. And I've asked for them to indicate whether it's budget neutral or there's a budget impact.
Yeah, you just have to redirect your resources. And because another AP classes creates another singleton. So now when you're looking at five periods or six periods a day and you have five or six AP classes that can only happen one period, now what starts to happen is kids are trying to fit other things into their schedule that are, there's always going to be a conflict. So how, how bad is the conflict? I guess that's what, that's the tricky thing. So the singletons definitely complicated a little bit. It's not a reason not to do it, but because, what do we have? Five, I think we have five or six APs now. Right? I think five or six.
Around there and they are well attended.
Yeah. So, but that's always the trade off, right? If we want to set up an engineering class, then that's going to take the place of some other science class that we currently offer. You know, because you only have so many teachers who can teach.
Right.
The classes. But electives is a good example. You can put electives in. You know, it's hard to mess with the poor, right? You need English, you know, you need, yeah, those kind of core, but, but we have electives. You know?
And this is a way of reinventing ourselves too, for the times, taking a look at what we currently do and expanding to what also the kids are desiring. And we don't know that until signup time. So it's almost putting the cart in front of the horse. We have to offer the course for the kids to sign up for. We don't know if they'll fill. And if it fills, it runs. And if it doesn't, something else takes its place. So we almost have to go down this road of new course, hoping they'll sign up. So the teachers market like crazy to get the kids in the courses, so they do fill. Yeah, and it goes in the program of studies, but it may not run because of enrollment, so.
But it all has to fit into the graduation requirements. I mean, it's, you know, it really is a delicate dance.
It is, yeah.
Particularly in a small school where you're sharing staff.
That complicates it even more, but it's manageable and we're doing it. Yep.
Definitely.
So those are the overview of the seven standards and where do we go from here? Is kind of the, the big question is we review the accommodations of recommendations that the team has suggested to us. The report goes to the NESC board meeting, I believe in the wintertime for them to vote on everything. If we're on warning for something or whatever it may be, that's where they vote for it. I don't anticipate any of that. I've met with the chair and reviewed the report with him. If there's an area that needs attention, they could ask us to do special progress reports on updates and that could be on an annual basis. And I've, I've been in that position where you have to write a report each year in order to get off warning and that takes some time. If you are on warning, I'm not saying that we are. I'm hoping we can avoid that. What will be required is the two year reports. And I'll be attending a NESC update next week on what those two year reports look like because they have changed the, the criteria. And there will be a five year report update as well. School works on recommendations to align with the standards. So they're a guide. I should say we go back to the first standard, the core values and beliefs. We adjust according to the core values and beliefs and all the recommendations. So you can see how that one standard guides everything. And then from there, we do a self-assess work towards our standards, whether we're reaching our goal, how are we doing? And then from there, a self-assessment report is, is created before the 2027 visit. And it may seem like a long ways away, but when you look at the recommendations and shifting cultures and working in a direction, you need those 10 years to make it happen.
So the winter timeframe is what we're looking, when the, when the board meets?
I believe it's winter is their next board meeting. I would have to confirm that we're on their agenda because they have other schools that just went through the process last spring.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to bring this up because it always seems to. So I'm going to bring this up because it always seems to happen. I just want Principal Richards' take on this. But when we go through the budget and we're at the crunch time and we're trying to figure out how we can take money out of the budget, this comes up where, you know, NESC will be paid, you know, it's quite expensive.
Oh, for the visit, yeah.
How important is NESC to you?
As a personal opinion, I prefer not to do that. I can give you my professional opinion, my professional opinion. So probably about five years ago, there was some action with a school to fall out of NESC and rally some very influential schools to fall out with them. They did it on their own. And others signed on to the letter and sent it off to NESC. And there was a movement of, you either need to change what you're doing or we're going to fall out. So NESC heard them and I was one of the schools that they approached. NESC heard them. It was a wave of voice. So what they did was they formed a committee of superintendents, principals, key leaders in districts, and they basically took them on a retreat for four days. And they looked at their standards and they presented, this is who we are, who do we want to be? I was one of the folks that was selected to reinvent those standards. So what we did is basically take a look at the process and I've been through school visits at this time, probably about eight of them. So I could speak directly to what works and what doesn't work. And there were a lot of people in the room as well. The, a lot of it was very taxing on the school that they're visiting. And time-wise, resources, and that was part of what we shared with them. And we came up, after the four days, we came up with an idea of what it should look like. And it should be a self-reflection of who you are and where you think you need to improve. So if I felt as if I need help on standards two and three, I would put that in a report to NESC to say, I'd like you to come to my school and really assess us on standards two and three, focus on that. But we're really good on standards four and five and this is why. They would take my word for it. In the past, they wouldn't. And they would, their visits are now focused on the self-assessment of where you think you need help, which I think is much more productive. There are fewer people on the visiting committee. It's a shorter timeframe and it's a much more targeted visit. The recommendations, when you look at them, it's all good practice. This isn't their version. This is just good practice, whether it's a course of skillful teacher, which most schools use. They teach in college. These standards fall into what the teachings of colleges and universities and what we should be doing for kids. Culture. We should be looking at the culture. Teaching all kids, differentiated instruction, all those things I mentioned. Those are all great teaching that we should be doing. So their stand, their method needed to be revisited. And that prompted, generated the letter. And I agree, and that's why I was pulled onto that committee. I'm happy to say they heard us. They reinvented themselves as far as the process. And now they're actually implementing that process and going through, and we'll go through that process next time in 2027. More of a reflection of what we think we need and then evidence of where we think we're good. And that they committed to a target visit.
It was always perceived to be kind of a hammer, like to Dan's point. People would beg visiting teams to put them on warning for community resources because they, they use it as a lever. So we need a new school or you, you know, now your town has to submit more money for budgets, right? So the, the whole focus of that has changed. But at the same time, as Dan was talking, when he was talking about what made it change and districts pulling out, that was at the same time that the state's accountability system was kicking in and, you know, people are getting school, school visits and the criteria for the standards for the two visits was different. So like, wait a minute, how are we possibly going to respond to what they say over here? And then in addition, we've got this $25,000 visit that comes in and, you know, it's not the state accountability. It's not, it's a regional accountability and which weighs more. And it was, it was very, very intense and combative. So that is what prompted the organizations to come together and say, you guys got to be working on the same thing here. Because the information we get from NESC should be on the same things that we should get if we're do, if the state's doing an accountability visit. Right, and, and that's what I hope they're coming to now. Because the little people at the bottom of the food chain, all of us, it gets very hard to manage it all when good ideas in there, in and of themselves, have to get implemented. It just pushes down and there's just too much. So that message was heard and I'm glad that they had Dan as one of the people because he has a good sense of this. But it, you know, it, it's the, it's sort of our, our challenge.
But it seems like it's almost like Big Brother watching over you. Because like you had said, it's, they're not telling us things that we don't know are needed for a good educational, you know, system to work. But it's them coming in to ensure.
Them blessing us, you know?
Right?
You're a good school district.
You know, NESC is helping us to clarify and really articulate. And I was in a couple of faculty meetings with teachers. I was working on one of these standards. And I, I was just so impressed and also, I mean, they, they took a lot of time. It was very time-consuming. And I'm, you know, I was just hoping that it would be productive and helpful and, and I know it. You know, it, it's probably kind of a, a difficult thing to find time for. But I, I hope it was all worthwhile and that is the hope, I'm sure, of your, your committee to help NESC make this process worthwhile for people and not a, not a waste of time of things that we have to do, but something of real value.
One of our complaints was, we have so many masters to report to. We've got Desi, we've got you, we've got, you need to look at each other and align. And we did that through the process. And we took every standard and aligned it to a Desi standard and it all aligned. So what happened was, you didn't have the two master voices. Now you have one voice, just two different organizations in doing that. I've been in, to answer your question about community, we know this in Georgetown, all those things that you mentioned about, you know, good education and good teaching, but there are communities that don't know great teaching. There are schools where they present themselves as great teaching is happening, but when you inspect it, it's not as great as perceived or presented. So these folks are checking balance to make sure that the voice is being communicated and the mindset that's being presented is actually happening. So I have written many reports and some have been right on target and some are, I'm sorry, but what you tell the community is not really happening in these classrooms and this is why. And here's the recommendations. So there is a need for that independent professional, in that profession, voice to come into your school and to do a check and balance of what you're doing and what you're communicating and mindset. And don't forget, a lot of teachers don't move on after a certain point and a cultural mindset happens. They may think they're a star teacher, and we do have many of them at the school, but they think they're a star teacher. But in fact, when someone comes in and checks and gives them feedback from the outside, it's an eye-opener.
What is your?
That's helpful.
Thank you.
What is your, and this has to be the best way, honestly, the best way to start a new job is.
Yes, exactly. You told him that. That's one of the settling points.
Is, I guess my question is, four months or so in, was anything, and I'm not going to say is anything a surprise to you, because that feels like a very softball-y question. My, my intent is not a hard question, but is there anything that you said, huh, I didn't, I didn't see that coming in or that that wasn't my perception of the process that you did through the spring and the summer? Was there anything that kind of stood out as, huh, I wasn't expecting that?
So it didn't show up in the interview when I applied for the job? There's something that probably wouldn't surface through a interview or over the summer until the machine is up and running in September. One thing that has come to my attention is voice. I think people need the opportunity for a voice, not sure how to express the voice. And sometimes it's just loud and it, it's pushed back. I think there needs to be a vehicle for folks to have voices and a procedure for them in order to build a culture and develop those core values and beliefs. That's a difficult one to tease out over the summertime when there's very few people in the building or an interview. But I, I think that's one thing that's surfacing and they recognized it as well. And how we do that is going to be interesting. And that's a culture shift and that will take years to do, but I have to provide the opportunity for folks and the protocols to do that.
Is there anything that you think the, and I know you said you were meeting with the faculty next time, whenever that is, anything that you think they would be surprised about from their perception? Like you were saying, I'm a star teacher. Well, maybe you're not. Any, anything in here that kind of strikes you as, not a surprise in a bad way, but a, a thinkable moment?
So I probably shouldn't use that star teacher example. They complimented us, our teachers. I do want to state that. You know, it's very personal. This report is very personal because they put their hearts and souls into this. And this is part of who they are. Teaching isn't just a job you show up for. It becomes part of your fiber and your soul. So when the recommendations come forward, they may take it personally and they shouldn't. And so that's always my worry in presenting this and I really have to think carefully how I present this. I can certainly hand out the list of commendations and recommendations, but folks may be really disturbed by one or two of the recommendations and take it personally. And I don't want that to happen. So I, I don't know, but I do know that teaching is part of your identity. Education is part of your identity. This is a reflection on part of your identity. And I have to make sure that we don't leave bruised, but we do have a reality check. And I'll figure that one out, but, so.
Yeah, I was really, I mean, I was really happy with the report because I know what we've worked on since, you know, we, we were on warning. You know, all of those commendations, you know, of things and the, you know, faculty worked hard, school committee, administration. We, we have all worked together and I think our strategic direction was played out in this report. Definitely differentiation, I was not surprised. That's a, that's very differently done in secondary schools, right? And so, you know, it does take a little bit, the idea of advisories, you know, which gets at the voice and those kind of things. We just recently sort of really delved into that. We really don't do it at the high school in terms of advisories. Clubs often take that sort of role, but I mean, as a school. So everything in here, I think, is very doable. Like, I don't see anything in here that we're like, oh my God, that is like, when you look at the report from 2006 and '07, there were a lot of recommendations. There were some nice commendations too, but there were a lot of recommendations which are no longer there. So like I said, you're never going to get, you know, there's always going to be recommendations and commendations. But when I read it, I didn't see anything that surprised me or that I was concerned about that, you know, wasn't something that, you know, with a good principal and a dedicated faculty, you know, and wonderful students, we couldn't, you know, put together. When they're asking for lists of, you know, what's your process, that's very different than you don't have anything, right? So there was nothing that I saw in here that they didn't feel the real foundations were in place and they were asking for a little bit more, a little bit deeper, right? It wasn't like they were saying, you've got to set up this whole thing. That's what struck me. And I think that we all deserve a pat on the back for that because that has been, you know, a labor of love for, you know, for 10 years, trying to get off a warning. And, you know, trying to just make sure that, you know, our plans were to make the best school we could with, with the resources we have. And we, we get, I get people all the time that ask me, how do you do that? How do you offer those classes? How do you do that when, you know, your per pupil is sometimes $2,000 or $3,000 a student? Less than other schools. But I think the answer is, and it was proven in this point, is we put the money where it's going to make a difference for kids. Right? We might not have all the state-of-the-art, you know, things on the shelf, you know, but what we're doing with kids is good stuff. And that, that came through in my mind loud and clear and I was very happy to see that for the faculty, you know, for the administration, for the town. But I like the fact that we've got things to work on, right? It's a continuous improvement cycle and it will integrate this into our district improvement plan. Obviously, Dan will integrate it into his school improvement plan, so. But, you know, thank you, Dan, for putting together the presentation. And you're right, Michael, it's a really, he doesn't own, he doesn't own it, right? You know, so, you know, you come in and. Not yet, next year, next time we have a visit. Well, sorry, Dan, I can't help but go there. It's the perfect time to come in as a new principal.
Hey, Carolyn.
You're up.
Next.
Thank you, Dan. That was great. That really is. And you have to fold it for it so you can read it at your leisure.
I'll log it. Yeah.
Michael, you don't have a good spot there. You've got to find a better spot for you. I know, but you're going to get a sore neck. Put it up a little bit higher.
Higher, yeah.
It took us a long time to get it.
True.
At all.
I was over there for a while.
Yeah. Well, actually, you guys, you guys could probably have seen that just as well. These guys would eat that.
You may want to give him that.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Carolyn.
Thanks. So you'll be seeing me tonight and at our next meeting. So today, we just want to, I think as Carol mentioned in her notes there, we have statewide new accountability systems and reporting and metrics that are used to let schools and districts know how they're doing. So tonight, I just wanted to take, go over the broad strokes of what that new accountability system is and how our schools fared in that new system. And then the following school committee meeting, we can talk a little bit more and I'll have some more reports where you can get a little further down the rabbit hole of our particular MCAS scores and what trends we're seeing, where that is going in terms of the school and district improvement plans that we have in place and what we've been doing in the past and kind of just go from there. So big picture tonight, get a little more in the weeds at our next school committee meeting. So please feel free to jump in, ask me any questions, but tonight, we're all about the new accountability system.
So the MCAS is when?
The 24th.
The next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting, the 24th, yeah. We'll get into a little bit of the MCAS here because that obviously factors directly into our accountability data. But in terms of, you know, school-to-school trends and what we're seeing in subgroups.
You guys would be, be too much. That's the context.
When are we getting the letters?
You should, you should. You guys, when did you mail them?
Yesterday?
They're thinking because we had, because we had a discussion about this.
We coordinated with the middle school, the high school and the elementary school.
Yeah.
Families would receive them all at the same time.
Tuesday because, is it Tuesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday?
Earlier this week.
Sometime.
The days do go blur. Yeah, this week. So you should get them soon.
Yeah, and that, that'll be good context to have this, to know kind of what, what we're looking at.
Right.
So here's kind of what we'll, what we'll quickly cover tonight, starting with some highlights for 2018 accountability. So just to kind of rewind the clock a little bit, two years ago was the last year that we were on the old accountability system where schools got a rating from one to five and the district got that, the rating of the lowest rated school. And that was kind of the well-established system with the legacy MCAS score or test. Last year, schools, as long as they had students take the MCAS, they didn't have an accountability rating. So last year, we were kind of in limbo, as everyone was, because it was the first year of the new MCAS for grades three through eight. And they didn't want to develop a whole new accountability system with just one year's data.
Baseline.
Right. So now we have two years' worth of data in grades three through eight and they're using those two years to, you know, they use 2017 to set targets for 2018. Now we kind of can see some results. Here are some other highlights of just how the accountability system has changed from what it used to be to what it is now. The first thing is there are additional accountability indicators that go beyond just how we did on the MCAS. I'll go into what those things are in a little bit. There's a focus on raising the performance of each school's lowest performing students. So in the past, they just used to look at all students kind of as a whole shot and then look at some specific subgroups. They're still looking at all students, obviously, but they're looking. They're still looking at all students, obviously, but they're looking for every school at the lowest performing students on that MCAS and seeing how those students are doing from year to year, just to make sure that we're make, we're, we're not letting the top performing students kind of pull the majority of the weight for the schools and districts. They're focusing specifically on the lowest performing students as well. Uh, there's the discontinuation of the levels one through five. They're replaced with new categories that I'll, that I'll mention towards the end here. Um, and districts are now classified based on their own district level data rather than just adopting the lowest score of the school. So districts and schools are now kind of have their own deal.
Right. So where we fell in like it was.
Right. So we were a level three district because we had a level three school. That is no longer have to, have to be the case.
That's good because that isn't fair.
Right. Uh, so here are these, these new accountability indicators. Some are kind of tried and true what we, what we've seen before. There are some new ones here and some that apply for Georgetown and one that doesn't apply for us. So there are four main accountability indicators. The first is achievement and that's basically how our students fared on the MCAS in English, Science and Math. They're given a scaled score. That's what you'll see when you get the letters, uh, from the individual student reports. Students will have a score. Um, it'll be out of a score bands and that'll put them in, um, not meeting, uh, partially meeting the standard. The achievement scores, meeting the targets or exceeding the targets. So how we achieved. We're also measured on student growth and that is a comparative measure. So that compares how our, uh, students grew from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen in comparison to how other students across the state grew. So that's put in a percentile. So if we're in the fiftieth percentile, that means we are grow, our students are growing at the average of the rest of the state. If we're above that, we are growing more, uh, over the course of that year than the average of the state. There's an.
Real quick, is that still, do we solve the, like the same cohort? The, the, these seemingly somewhat random selection of districts that we were being compared with in terms of.
Oh, right.
And I guess it wasn't really an MCAS thing, but it was a dollars per student, like.
Yeah, yeah.
We had, it was an, okay, and it was.
Yes, yes, yes.
Not a peer group that we would necessarily.
I don't think they compared it.
I think the only, the only links that are drawn are they're, they're comparing growth from elementary schools to elementary schools, middle to middle and high to high. So it's just grade bands they're keeping together.
Yeah, that's a, they, they still compare that, but that's more for pupil, per pupil spending and some of that kind of thing.
Budgets.
Yeah, budgetary.
Uh, there's a statewide indicator for English language proficiency. We do not have any of our accountability rating tied to this simply because we have a cohort that is too small to draw any discernible data. We have an EL population of a handful of students, literally, I can count them on one hand. So we, we just don't qualify for that and I'll show you how that factors into the percentages, um, in a bit.
It's still twenty students, right, Colin?
Yeah, the, the, the minimum cohort is twenty and so far short of that. Uh, and the additional indicators, uh, as I mentioned, is a, is a new factor this year. These account for some of our accountability scores depending on whether you're a middle school, uh, sorry, an elementary school or, sorry, what they call a non-high school and, and a high school. And if you're a non-high school, the one additional indicator is chronic absenteeism. And, uh, that's for grades, uh, one to twelve. So that's an indicator. That's one of the few indicators that shows up before third grade. Cause MCAS starts in third grade. This is the one indicator that, uh, our students have a say in, starting in, in the first grade. And chronic absenteeism, uh, is the percentage or the rate of our students that are missing ten percent or more of the school year. So that's eighteen days over the course of the year. They're now looking at our attendance data and, uh, that's factoring into our accountability rating. Now, a couple qualifiers there. That includes excused and unexcused absences. So regardless of how or why. Regardless of how or why a student is not in the building, if they're not, they're not and it counts towards one of those eighteen days, um, towards the, the chronic absenteeism.
And you can see why urban districts have an, have an objection to this, um, indicator.
Uh, I know it came up in the school council meeting at Penbrook yesterday when I, when I went through this presentation and there were the questions about, you know, what, what, it was, if I bring a doctor's note, if it's excused, if it's unexcused, but really just across the board, if you're not here, you're not here. The other additional indicators, and these are for high schools, are the high school completion rates or graduation rate. And there's a distinction between the four-year graduation rate and then the extended years, I think they call it, which is students that graduate in five or six years. And then the last one for high schools is the percentage of our upperclassmen that are completing advanced coursework classes. And I, that's obviously our AP courses is what basically is going to drive that for the middle, for the high school. Um, and that's, does not factor in how our students score on any advanced placement tests. It's simply the, the completion rate, which I like because we want to get as many students in those higher level classes as we can to give, get them exposed to that really rigorous coursework. So, um, we're doing well on that front.
The, the federal law requires one additional indicator. The state decided on three. At one point when I was on that superintendent's advisory committee with the commissioner, there were seven that were drafted, including things like, uh, percentage of kids who complete algebra in the ninth grade, the percentage of kids who take, you know, the arts. You know, so they're, they're, they've honed it down, but we needed one and they gave us three. Now, these will benefit us. These, these don't benefit some districts in the state in quite the same way. So that's a challenge.
Uh, so on the next slide, uh, is the weighting, uh, of those indicators and kind of how they factor into the overall accountability rating. For non-high schools, so this would apply for Penbrook and our middle school. Uh, and you want to look on this chart, uh, to the far right column because we do not have that EL accountability. So sixty-seven and a half percent, our overall rating will come from our students' achievement on the MCAS. Twenty-two and a half percent of our rating will come from how much our students grew in comparison to other students in the state. And the final ten percent will come from that chronic absenteeism indicator in Penbrook and the middle school. For, uh, high schools, uh, it's a little bit different because we have the high school completion. Uh, so forty-seven and a half percent will come from achievement, twenty-two and a half percent will come from student growth. Uh, here's our high school completion, uh, which indicates twenty percent of our accountability and the same ten percent for the chronic absenteeism. All good? Wonderful. So now we'll get into kind of what the, the different components specific to the MCAS are. The other ones are pretty easy to wrap your head around. Are our students graduating or are they not? Are they in school or are they not? Are they taking AP courses or are they not? Now we can kind of get into, uh, the nuts and bolts of, of the more nuanced aspects. So we have a normative component and that, our component, those are components that are, uh, basically comparative. Where our students are compared to other students taking the similar, uh, assessment, uh, whatever, MCAS test that is in whatever grade. Um, and those come down to those percentiles. Um, we're a fiftieth, if you're in the fiftieth percentile, you're smack dab in the middle in comparison to everyone else. If you're above that, you're doing better than that fifty percent. If you're doing, if you're lower than that, you're below that percentile. We'll see percents and percentiles and it's just really important to keep that distinction in your head because even I get confused and try to equate it to like a letter grade and it's not smart to do that because they mean different things. Um, so these normative components, uh, compare schools administering similar statewide assessments of, as I said. They're also used to identify that lowest performing group of students. So the bottom twenty-five percent of our students are drawn from the percentiles because obviously you have to compare them to other statewide students. Um, and the same calculation is used at the subgroup level. So we can see percentiles for our high needs subgroup or we can see percentiles for our students with disability subgroup or any demographic data, gender data that we want to look at. There are also percentiles drawn to those subgroups. You know, we, we obviously want to know how we're doing in comparison to, to the state. But I think that we, we have other metrics that we hold ourselves accountable to and that we like to look at, but it's just nice to, to have that. Then there's the criterion reference component and I like to think of this as here's the bar. Where are you in relation to that bar? Are you at it? Are you above it? Are you below it? And that is really about closing those gaps. And, you know, if you're, if you're meeting, getting up to that bar quicker than, than others, then you're doing a better job at closing those achievement gaps. So the, the important thing about these criterion reference components, where those bars are set, those bars are a little bit different depending on the subgroup that you may be looking at. So the lowest performing groups may have a different target in the criterion reference component than the all students. Simply because it wouldn't be equitable to set the bar the same for everyone when you have students that are, um, already starting at a, at a lower point. So there are different targets for those.
But when you see the report, it, unless you understand that.
Yeah.
It's a little confusing.
Yep.
It's a little confusing.
Which we won't look at tonight, but we'll get there.
When you see the reports.
Um, so now we can, uh, start looking at just, this is kind of the splash page of each school's, uh, accountability report. And I just want to go through what all of this means and then we can get a little bit further into kind of dissecting all of this. Uh, so this first one is, uh, the Penbrooks front page and, uh, it's got all the organization information up there. The overall classification, this is where you used to see, are you a level one, level two, level three school? Our overall classification is not requiring assistance or intervention. And our reason for classification is we are partially meeting targets. So hooray, we're, we're not a level three school anymore because, uh, it doesn't exist, but this is, this is good news. Um, cause we, we could have been, well, we'll, we'll get into it. But, uh, we'll start by just looking at the accountability percentile in the bottom right and we're in the fifty-second percentile, uh, of other, uh, elementary schools in the state. So we're, we're kind of right, we're kind of right there, um, which is fine. That's the, you know.
State was predicting there'd be fifty percent in partially and fifty percent in meeting. But they never, you know, see, we're sort of used to sixty, seventy, eighty percent. As we've, you know, gained in proficient and advanced and we used to look at that. They don't do that anymore.
Yep.
Are the, there's partially meeting targets and meeting targets. Is there another?
Exceeding.
What are, what are?
Yeah.
There's four.
I don't want to call them levels.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, right. So they're, they're, uh, so we could have gotten the classification of needing general assistance or support or like needing intensive assistance and support, um, which are the, the, the schools that are meeting much less or showing a consistent trend of not making progress, um, towards any of the specific indicators that are there. The progress towards meeting improvement targets, this says partially meeting target, forty percent partially meeting targets. And basically what that means is out of the potential points that Penbrook could have received on all of those indicators that I mentioned, and we'll look at that in a minute, um, Penbrook received forty percent of those possible points.
Out of a hundred?
Yes. However, uh, a hundred is not realistic to, to.
To achieve.
To achieve. Because basically that means you have exceeded every, exceeded every single target set for you, but from every single subgroup. And even the state, when we were on a conference call, um, and we'll get into the, the point values, a three out of four means that you've met your target. So if you're at seventy-five percent, because you're at a three out of four overall, you're, you're hitting a home run. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Great. Um, we'll look quickly at, at the middle school. Um, again, same overall classification, not requiring assistance, same reason, partially meeting targets. They're in the forty-second percentile in terms of other middle schools across the state. And out of the possible points awarded for middle school, uh, they have met twenty-four percent of those possible points. I see the faces. But I'll put that, I'll try to put that into a, a broader context in the next couple of slides to try to, uh, just make sure everyone knows what that means in comparison to the rest of the state.
The next one is what I like to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, high school, uh, not requiring assistance or intervention and since we're above that seventy-fifth percent, right? Because seventy-five is meeting targets, they have the, the, the meeting targets classification, uh, and they are in the eighty-sixth percentile. Caveat here is, uh, high school is still under the old legacy MCAS. So they're the, the last grade that has not switched over to that next gen. So I remember when I was here last year, uh, and I mentioned that kind of the, the big swing was we used to have seventy-five, eighty percent proficient. And now we're kind of like a fifty-fifty of whether or not we're meeting that target or not. The middle high school is still under that old model where we certainly have a lot more of our students in the, um, proficient and exceeding categories than we do in the, in the middle and elementary school. So, uh, in terms of setting targets, um, we had a one, we, we had a one-year target from seventeen to eighteen. Uh, under the old system, they set a six-year target and then they basically chopped that into sixths. So you knew where you needed to go each, each year. Because it's a new test, they had a one-year target, so that's kind of the bar that was set for us. Targets for achievement indicators were based on assessment performance of schools that have demonstrated improvement in the past. So they're really just, they kind of tried to take some of the old indicators from the old accountability and, and translate it to the new one. And the targets for non-assessment indicators, that's the chronic absenteeism, the graduation rate and the AP course enrollment. Just based on past trends and reasonable expectations, they say. To be honest, we didn't have any issues with any of those, so I think we're okay.
The other thing is they widened the, the, the score band, right?
Yeah, so there's a thirty-point score band between each, uh, level. You'll, if you get a letter for your children, um, you'll see what those score bands are. I can't remember off the top of my head because they're seemingly arbitrary numbers, um, but they're there.
So it's not as easy to move from level to level. That's the point. You can be doing, you can be doing well and still be in partially meeting, but on the higher end of that, you know, because it's still a pretty broad span.
Well, because like we used to talk about how, you know, if you're at the top of high needs improvement, how you could, you could get them to bump up to proficient.
Yeah, but same, same concept, but this is just a wider span. So you can make, you're going to make improvement and progress, but it's not going to push you into the next level quite as easily. I think this is a good.
Yeah, so this, uh, I mentioned that I would, I would try to bring some context to that middle school cringe face that I saw from a few people. So this is the statewide differences between twenty seventeen, the first year of the new test and last year, the second year of the new test. And again, if you look all the way to the right of that slide, you'll see, uh, the, this kind of plus or minus by grade. And that's the, the number of points that was different between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. So overall, right in third grade, there was a three point four point improvement in third grade from seventeen to eighteen. Two point six in fourth grade, three points in fifth grade. But if you look at the middle school, um, statewide, seventh grade, there was a two-point dip, um, across the state and not as big of an improvement in eighth grade, uh, for the ELA test. So overall it was a one and a half point gain, but a little less, uh, there was less improvement in our middle school grades, uh, in ELA.
Is this statewide?
This is statewide. This is statewide. This is me giving you context for everything that I'm about to show you. And if you look at math, you'll see statewide, overall, there was actually a dip, um, in math performance from seventeen to eighteen. We listened to a webinar. We didn't hear any, you know, any reason or, or what they were.
But they're still looking at the test. This is the same thing that happened with MCAS in the first couple of years we did it. Is there, you know, there was a lot of work that was done on the actual test itself, you know, calibrating the standards. So I feel like we're back ten year, you know, twenty years ago, starting over with looking at this test.
Very, is it, very broadly, it's a different test, testing different things and we're trying to?
It's testing the standards.
Well, it's testing the standards, which.
Which we should have shifted to.
Moving target.
They have them, yeah.
But they've had the, the, the most recent standards though have been around for four or five years. We, you know, remember that whole discussion about the Common Core and how, how are they going to mush them together? But I think that there's still, the test sometimes can be set up in such a way that maybe it doesn't measure how we're teaching it or, you know. So I, I do, I do think it's interesting that Colin belongs to some groups, I belong to some groups and everybody's saying the same thing, like what happened to the middle school? Like the middle school test results in districts, you wouldn't even necessarily expect them to be in, have seen, have shown a dip.
Right.
So. Well, and the other thing is, um, use of technology.
That, yeah.
Should complete the test.
Yep.
Is, could be a factor.
Yeah, certainly not, you know, an excuse, but something that we need to think about. Like it's, it's not only a new test with different question types and different expectations for students, but they're also doing it in a way that our teachers and our students are not as familiar with, obviously, as grabbing a number two pencil and opening the test booklet.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll, we'll look at all of that and we, just like we did the last time, we'll continue to make adjustments to the instruction to make sure this, this is not, and when they take these tests, there's no surprises in terms of the kind of questions.
So now we can get it, I think I moved this slide on my deck and not, didn't make it in your packet.
It's a little.
Yes, sorry. Uh, I figured it made more sense to put here. So when we talked about the, the, the percentage of points that a school got based on the available points, well, in the next couple of slides, I'll show you that, here's just kind of what those points mean and it's important to know. So as I mentioned, a four means you have exceeded the target. You know, the state sets an ambitious target for you. If you reach a four, you've exceeded that target, which is, you know, a very impressive thing to do. Meeting the target, getting three out of four points is kind of where we want to be. We want to continue that, that continuous improvement because those targets are always above what they had previously been. So if we're meeting the target. So if we're meeting the target, we're making gains and we're growing. Two points means we're improving, but we've improved below the target that was set for us. One point means that we have changed, we did not change from year to year. So this one point, there's no change from 17 to 18. And zero points is actually a decline from year to year, from 17 to 18. So now we can quickly look at just how each school received those, the, the percentage of possible points based on the indicators that I mentioned at the, at the beginning of the slideshow. So this is a little complicated to look at if it's, if it's new to you. But up on the top, you have the two categories, the all students category and the lowest performing students category. That's, this is that, that new subgroup that, that they are looking closely at to award points to. Each group gets their own point values based on the achievement growth and in this, in this instance, chronic absenteeism. So just kind of walk you through this, for ELA achievement, all of our students at Penbrook and the lowest performing students received two out of the four possible points, which means that they improved overall, but not meeting the, the achievement target set for them in ELA.
And as Colin said, we're not going to look at it tonight, but the reports you can look at that are one level down can actually show you that, that percentage change.
Yeah. In mathematics, for Penbrook achievement, the all students category, they received zero points and the lowest performing students received two out of four points. So our lowest performing students improved below the target. However, our, the all students category had a decline in math from 17 to 18. But remember, so did the rest of the state. Every, like overall, there was that small decline in mathematics throughout the state. In science, we basically stayed the same between 17 and 18, which gave us that one point in achievement. For growth in English and math, our students both improved in growth, but below the target, which gave them the, the two out of four points. And similar in our lowest performing students, they improved in English and they about stayed the same in math for growth.
But that's at a different target than the all students. Just important, because that's where it gets a little confusing. How, how did the lowest performing kids get a two and the other kids got a zero?
And a lot of times, the lowest performing students, their growth targets are wider than the all students category because they need to catch up, they need to grow more in order to close that gap.
Are the lowest perform, just from a statistics question, are the lowest performing students also in the all students?
Yes.
So they're sort of being double.
Yep.
Double counted, yep.
And those, and the, and what that, we can get into the subgroups, but this doesn't have any information on the subgroups that we've been interested in looking at in the past, that high needs subgroup and that students with disabilities subgroup that we've been looking at. You know, we've looked at them internally, I didn't have them here just because.
Yeah, well, that's the next. Just to go back to that math.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the, the whole state declined and we declined, but we, I don't want to say that that's okay.
No, no.
Agreed.
We're, we're not disagreeing with you.
I, I agree and, and I have a little, let's, how, how should we think about that data? Slide coming up that will hopefully answer that question. And in terms of chronic absenteeism, for Penbrook, both subgroups met the target for chronic absenteeism, so we were below the target, chronic absentee threshold to meet that target.
Well, that's good, I would think that would be, because we don't have an absenteeism issue. It doesn't seem like in, at any level.
Still an important conversation to have with that family that's thinking about taking a two-week vacation, whenever. Because we don't want to, now that we have this data and we know that it's being used, we want to make sure that people are in the know. For the middle school, again, we received 24% of the possible points. And you can see that the achievement scores for the all students group, you know, we, we declined for the, the three subject areas. Again, just to put in context, that was the norm for the state. They saw a dip in ELA and math for middle schools. But our, the lowest performing students improved in math. The good thing is that in the middle school, our students were showing growth and that's comparative to the state. So our students were actually growing more than the majority of state because we met targets for English Language Arts and we were improving in growth for math. However, that, because there was a slight dip in the overall achievement scores, did we reach that bar? The answer was no, we were below that bar. So even though we might have grown more in comparison with the state, we still didn't get the achievement points.
So are we going to be able to look at the, the schools across the state?
Oh, I don't know.
Because, I mean, it seems to me, is the state?
Yeah, these are all, this is all public, yeah.
Okay, so that was on.
Not a D E S E probably.
So is this, well, I was wondering if they would provide it to me, I don't want to go on that thing. Go through the. They'll remind you it's on the site.
You can insert them, but then it's also.
But is it that they're, they're, is the state setting a bar that is too?
Is too, yeah, they always set the bar high because they want you to reach it.
I get it, but we also talked about the fact that.
Get to that 100%.
Be.
No, they predicted, they predicted that 50% were going to basically fall into those two categories.
In fact, there was, there were, there were fewer schools that had that.
Bell shaped curve philosophy.
Distinction, there are far more schools that are in the partially meeting. Just simply because they didn't get to that 75%, which is meeting, which is where the majority of the schools.
So this is all on the.
Oh, I'm sure you can get it on D E S E.
Yeah, if you search school prof, D E S E school profiles, you can search by district, by school. I agree with Michael, it's not user friendly. You gotta know, you gotta know where to click and then know where to click within the click. But it's there and I'd be happy to walk anyone through.
I mean, even in the old MCAS, they had a high bar, remember? They were saying you had to get to six years, you had to get into the, what, nine, it was like 90 to 100.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it became obvious, probably two years or three years into it, that it wasn't, it wasn't set up in such a way that everybody was going to hit those targets.
Can I ask one more? So from your, and again, I know you're, you're providing context without details, which I'm a fan of. The growth, so you're saying on the growth side in, at the middle school, we outpaced the typical middle school in the state, understood. Why are we 42nd percentile, which would indicate that we are so below?
This is number 24.
24, not 40, the 42nd was.
That was in the.
Penbrook.
Penbrook.
We're 24th.
Partially.
I was looking at the accountability.
Of the accountability.
Because percentile 50 is low.
That's right, that's right, that's right. So that factors into some of the other indicators, like the, we didn't receive any points for the chronic absenteeism for all students, other schools probably did, which gave them a few more points that factored into the, to the overall accountability. And there, there were schools that did receive points for the achievement, even if it was one point because they just didn't, they didn't decline. And we didn't get those points. And I'll, I'll show you again in a, in a slide or two, kind of how, how nominal those changes can be and can really affect, you know, make a target.
Okay, so I guess I misspoke then because our chronic absenteeism in the middle and the high school declined.
So what that means is we had more students that were chronically absent in 18 than were in 17.
Right.
So, yep.
And is that a binary, there was one, there was less years, then you got zero?
So what you don't have is the, the data that goes below this. So in some cases where it'll say, improve below the target, you know, we're off by point two.
Carol, you're ahead of me, hold on.
No, I'm trying to help.
I got one of those.
Okay, sorry. I went over this with you, I can't remember. Sorry, buddy.
That's okay. So our high school, again, the, the, the old test, but in the, in the additional indicators, so everything is relatively used to what we're seeing, we're meeting and exceeding targets for achievement and growth for the, for the majority of those categories. In the new indicators, such as the graduation rate and the dropout rate and the advanced coursework, we're, we're doing great, we, we are exceeding, we're meeting those. As Barbie noticed, we're, we declined in our absenteeism in the high school from 17 to 18. So just something to keep in mind.
And the middle school, right?
Yeah. But we're over that 75%, that meeting target, so that's why the high school has a meeting targets threshold.
I think you added this.
I did, because you told me to.
I guess, I said, I know I didn't see that.
So this is just in, in reference to, you know, even though we might see zero points, which means we declined, what does that really mean? And this is when, when we dive further into the data, so this is math achievement for, I can't even remember which school, but I just wanted, there's always a larger story to be told when looking at data, right? As Dan mentioned, right, this is all great to look at and it's, and it's great, but this is our, our hard data. We know that our students and our schools are much, much more than anything that D E S E can tell us. And I don't need to tell you all that, but it's just important to keep that in mind. But in terms of the data, even that, we can, we can really look at more closely to see what's, what's happening. And in terms of this, for instance, if you look right in the middle of that chart, you'll see that change and it'll, you know, negative 1.3, 0.9, negative 1. So we're getting zero points because overall we dipped one point, which could literally be one question overall on the MCAS assessment, which is a little frustrating to think about. So, but what we talked about in our admin team meeting was, there had been years where the district and schools had declined by 10 points, you know, 16 points.
Remember that year that we got the level three, really, we, we declined and that's, that high needs subgroup was seven points, right, so which you're not, you're not going to dig out of. It's, it's just a very tough.
So the, so the lowest performing students, they received two points because they improved by 0.9 points. But we got zero points because our economically disadvantaged students decreased by 0.9%. So there's really, there's a lot of play in, in those numbers, so I don't want people to get hung up on we got zero points or we got three points or we got two points. There, there, there's a lot more story to be told when you really dive in. And the good thing is, a lot of those numbers where we have declined, we're not substantially like, whoa, what, what's happening here?
I'm glad I asked you to add that, Colin.
So the categorization of schools, here's kind of what, what the new rating system that you can think of. So schools that are above that 75% are meeting targets, they're, because they, you know, have a three out of four overall. Partially meeting targets are schools that are in the 0 to 74%, which, yeah, I, I know, how can you be partially meeting if you're at zero? But then the state goes, takes a little deeper dive in, for those really lower performing schools and some, about 15% of schools across the state have either a focused targeted support or broad and comprehensive support. So that's when they're looking, you know, for the schools that really are not meeting a lot of those, they're not gaining, getting a lot of those points, they're looking at the, you know, how well has the school been performing over time? And if they've been chronically underperforming, they can put in one of those two categories. Last couple of things here, the categorization of districts. As I mentioned, we are not now beholden to the lowest performing schools in the district. So we're still, our classification is still based on the performance of the, the schools. So you kind of put it all together, put it through the, the D E S E, you know, algorithm, machine or whatever they have and you get for the school. However, districts aren't given percentiles, so they're not comparing districts to districts. There's just too much, there's just too many variables there to, you know, are we, a district of three schools going to be compared to another district that is nowhere near what we are like? So they're not giving percentiles to districts. And here is our district accountability rating. Overall, as a district, we are not requiring assistance or intervention, we are partially meeting the targets. We are, have met 40, 48% of our possible points, partially meeting targets. And that last designation there, it only shows up on the district page. Determination for need for special education, technical assistance or intervention, we have a classification of needs assistance. Neither Carol nor I have gotten any indicators from anyone about where that came from or what that means or what the assistance will look like. I, I, I think it's, you know, we, we were, we had the needing assistance for the high needs subgroup in the past so that, you know, it's been there for us in the past.
And they're using that data as the baseline, so.
Right, so.
And Jack knows nothing, Jack hasn't gotten any.
No, none of us know anything about it.
When we discussed as an admin team, none of us had gotten anything, so.
But, you know, we don't know exactly what that looks like.
And they don't, there's nothing to back that up, there's no.
There probably, there must be, we just.
They have something, they just haven't told us.
Do you think they'll reach out to the district?
I mean, they would have to because you'd have to know what to work on in order.
And what assistance we've received, that assistance.
Yeah, I mean, we obviously want to read more about that.
We were actually surprised to see it because it was not on any of the school pages.
Right.
We would, we would have thought it would have appeared on the school pages, but I'm, I'm sure there's more information that will come and we'll go from there.
Yep. And when we know, we'll.
We'll let us know. Yep.
So just a couple of do's and don'ts, this kind of comes from the state and everyone's covering, covering themselves. So the, the first do not is not compare the, the new accountability data to the old. There's no crosswalk between what was once a level two is now a partially meets or what was now a level one, what used to be a level one is now whatever. Because there's, there's new indicators to, to draw the ratings from that didn't exist before. And here are the do's, use preliminary results for internal planning purposes. And we are, you know, already neck deep in, in all of that work. I know department chairs in the middle high school have been working with Dan on action plans and we took some of the PD time on Friday to work with Penbrook so they could look at the data and really start to develop some plans on how to improve and continue doing the good work and lots, lots more of that to be done. We'll review, do review the accountability resources, you know, we've done lots of webinars and we've tried to listen in and, you know, in our own professional groups, talking to other districts about what they're doing and what they're seeing, what they're noticing and asking questions, which we'll continue to do and you, of course, can.
We're doing some analysis at the, at the district level. So we use a lot of our admin time, you know, for that. And then one of the things we are going to start this year is some instructional rounds, which will be opportunities for all of the administrators together to be visiting classrooms based on what we're looking to see. There's a lot of things in place.
Since you told us to ask questions, I have one more, and it's another sort of statistics question. Lowest performing students, is that an overall lowest performing student? Or is that a lowest performing in ELA math or science? Just for, just does that skew?
Yes, it's per tested area.
Per tested area.
That's why we didn't have a lowest performing group in the science section because we don't have a, our class sizes are so small that we don't have a cohort that's big enough.
Okay.
And that includes any other possible subgroups. So lowest performing students could include a, a student with special needs, it could include a student that's economically, it's just.
Or a child that just had trouble in math.
Right, right.
Right, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not subgroup classified.
But actually, looking at the data, it looks like on paper, the lowest performing subgroups are making progress.
They are.
Which could be said is a result of.
The work we're doing, yeah.
Response to the intervention.
I wouldn't want to spoil the thunder for the next presentation, but that's one of the things that we saw when we looked again at that, that lowest performing subgroup, you know, that we have been watching and they made four points growth. So, you know, that was probably some of the more significant growth that we actually saw in any of the reports. So that tells us that all the things we've been doing are making a difference. The problem is when there's this bar and you're in a hole, it's, it's harder to, to get yourself up to where they want you to be. But that's why growth is important and that's why we pay a lot of attention to that. Thank you, Colin, that was great.
Colin, thank you.
Thank you very much, very comprehensive. Very great work making a complicated subject, believe me, the webinars we've been sitting, we glaze over. A lot. Thanks again, Colin. Okay, so that's, we're doing good. Bye, Chloe.
Bye.
Do you have line item transfers?
Me too.
So 262, 642. What's the numbers?
262s.
No, I know.
68 to 132.
68 to 132, okay.
Long-term subs, it's just a.
Well, we have, we have three right now at Penbrook. And so basically had to shift from the teachers at Penbrook to the long-term subline, yeah. It's like, it's, well, really.
It's like, it's, well, really, it, there's a hundred thousand dollars in long-term subs right now, but we had budget.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, I guess I'm, the, the overages were on.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's as we know, but it's so hard to project.
But because we have two teachers at Pembroke that are out for the year. So we just kind of shifted, you know.
At the middle school, we have.
There's a couple of short-term ones, and there's another short-term one that's coming back in November at Pembroke, but there's two that are out for the whole year.
Yeah, it's been a hard, that's been a hard line to.
It always is.
And so I'll make a motion to um, line item transfers totaling two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six forty-two oh two. Uh, number sixty-eight to one thirty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we have our budget calendar. That looks interesting.
It's just a, a draft.
Yep, it looks good though.
And we still are waiting for a date from Wayne, Snow, so.
Yeah, so those last couple of dates might change, so.
Yep.
The ones in March?
Yeah.
Busy. Um, so we have a donation from the PTA. So they're gonna help with the Plymouth plantation field trip, which is great.
They're still doing that.
I know, that's a fun field trip, and it's expensive. So that's great that they, they help with that. Um, so I'll make a motion to um, accept the very generous donation from the PTA in the amount of one thousand dollars that will be used towards the third grade trip to Plymouth plantation. So moved. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we uh, got some information from you guys on the um, school committee meeting topics.
Yeah, based on the information that you all sent to Barbie.
Yep.
Of administrative, so I plugged in some of the things that are just automatically school committee business. And then we worked as an administrative team to try to um, you know, put other things in, being obviously respectful of the time. And uh, you know, the ones that, you know, are a little more lengthy, we tried not to have multiple in one day. We did end up having a couple of questions. So Pam clarified one, which was um,
The new courses?
Kind of, yeah. So we weren't sure, we saw Martha Dodge's name, so we thought, oh, maybe she means the Adobe class that was added. So we were just looking for a little more clarification, and Pam had, I think, a good suggestion, which is to sort of um, integrate that in with the program of studies discussion. You know, just we'll ask Dan to, you know, kind of give, you know, give us a little overview of how the classes we added this year are going.
Right, when we have new courses, I think people in the community.
Keeps them for next year, yeah.
Would like to know how they've gone, if students have gotten, you know, what they've gotten out of them.
So if we can do that, that, that'll make sense. There are a couple of dates, I think I tried to put them in parentheses, where they were a different day of the week. Where did I put those?
February twelve and then thirteenth of March.
Yeah, so we just need to make, I just wanna make sure people know that.
I'm sure you didn't wanna spend Valentine's Day here.
Probably not, yeah.
You're welcome. So actually, we have those, the new courses on, in February this year.
Uh, well, approval of the program of studies, yeah.
Oh, that's the middle, is that the?
That's the middle high school, so I can put new courses here, just so I won't forget to. And then the other thing, Barbie, I wasn't.
The special education?
Yes, so I wasn't sure where you, whether you want to have uh, a meeting on December twentieth. Remember last year, it's like really close to the holidays? I don't know if you wanna reschedule it. It does get a little crazy that time of year, but.
I know, yeah, I think the twentieth, I think.
I mean, I just know.
Let me take a look at the calendar and check with you and see if we can do something different.
If we do move it, then I'm sure there's some items I can, I can shift there.
You know what, I would, you know, I was just thinking that we had this discussion a while ago about the preschool. I'd like to see something in January about the preschool and how they're going to promote, because the earlier that they get information out, you know, so that, you know, we can get the enrollment up, or the idea, you know, that maybe we can market it somehow, but I'd like to see that somewhere in January.
Well, January actually is the timeframe when the registration goes out, right?
Um, well, they do their lottery in, it's not until March.
March, I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. January starts, somehow to promote it. That's when the parents start filling it out, so that's what I'm saying, so, right.
So maybe we need to.
Maybe December.
Well.
It's December full.
Okay, wait a minute, hold on here.
Summer sports camps could go to January?
Yeah, how, I, we can move anything around.
Well, I just, I just wanted to see it so that.
I was thinking if we put summer sports camps there, because we had Ryan coming for fall sports review.
Right, well, let's do that. Let's do the, we can, December thirteenth, we'll talk about summer camps later.
So you wanna move summer camps?
We'll do preschool.
Okay.
I mean, I don't mind the December twentieth, if it's just, just blizzard bags. I mean, that's a pretty.
Well, well, no, I, so this is where I'd, I'd, I'd move something like preschool there.
Yeah, we didn't fill it in, 'cause we weren't sure.
'Cause I, yeah, but I, I'd probably move preschool there, if you were doing that.
Makes a lot of sense, you Dan.
I just, you know, it's something that's pretty important. I just wanna see what's gonna be done for it.
Absolutely. But the other ones here that are asterisk and bold, it said needs more information.
Right, right. So we were, uh, the principals were saying, well, like, for example, Jack said, we said special education presentation, so is there some, remember last year, we focused on something that a little more specifically, as opposed to the year before, he did the sort of general, here are all the programs we offer, kind of thing. Last year, it was focused a little bit more on a particular area, so what, what they were wondering was, you know, do we wanna, do you, do you wanna talk about the uh, SEL program? It, you know, for special education students. The other thing um, that he came up with, what a district's working, implementing our social emotional focus for the district, but you know, if there's something in particular that you would like to see, we, we're happy to focus it. He just didn't know what you wanted to really talk about in special education.
Well, yes, one thing that comes to mind is the idea that I know Jack was gonna try to do a little more of a co-teaching model, and.
Oh, the model at Pembroke that we're doing?
Right, and it would be interesting to hear how that's going, or.
Yep, we did change the model at the elementary, so we certainly could do that.
And at the middle high school level, I would just like to see um, how, just the overall scope of what it looks like there.
Special ed? Like structurally?
Yeah, and just like a, say, a day in the life of.
Oh, okay.
It used to change quite a bit, way back.
Well, I think it depends on, but, but you could, we could look at the, the sort of general special education, and then the, you know, like a day in the life of a program kid, right? Something like that, I mean, we could look at something like that. Okay, that, that gives us a little bit more direction, that, that'll help. And then the other one was RTI. So Margaret said, well, gee, we've done a lot with RTI in terms of presentations for the school committee. You know, both for academics as well as the social emotional things they're doing. She said, I'm, I'm wondering, is there something else that they would like? And I thought, well, maybe, I know we've been talking about our district planned calls for K-12, looking at it, remember Peter said, you know, we don't do it.
Right.
And uh, you know, um, I know Jack and Dan, you know, are definitely working on that, so maybe for RTI, we could just focus on the middle high school, if you wanted, in terms of the K to, you know, the K to twelve.
Yeah, I think that would be good to like, see how it is, what are they doing to integrate it into the middle high school. And I guess um, in terms of the NEASC report as well, the differentiation.
Yep, yep.
And how that's being worked on and implemented and.
Progress, if any, you know, what the data shows.
Okay.
And related to RTIs, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That helps. That, the only other one, and I didn't start it, but came up after, was um, the, oh, I did start, the science vertical team report, so, you know, in the past, you know, Colin's come in with his people from his team, and they've talked about the, you know, things of the, of the group. I think on your list, it said science. It didn't mention the other vertical teams, so I just.
About the curriculum, right?
Yeah.
The new curriculum.
In science, right, right, right. So that's fine, just to focus on science, but do you, Colin said, do they still want information on what the vertical teams are doing? So we can provide a handout of that, you know, as opposed to you feeling you have to come and go through, you know, each thing, so.
We'd just like to add an update as to how the new curriculum is, is doing. Now that the teachers have been working at it, this is the second year.
Stem scopes, right?
Right, and, you know, just sort of in the trenches with it, what's working, what's. Right, because stem scopes had a lot of um, assistance, and, and a lot of components, but I'm wondering how the teachers, if they're utilizing that assistance through the stem scopes, if they feel like they need it.
Online assistance, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay, I can definitely, I can definitely do that. Okay, that's helpful.
And I'll send you um, the goals.
Yeah, that's the only other thing that we have to just get.
I'll send that to you.
That's perfect.
Okay, uh, subcommittee reports. I know safety met today. Cheryl was there in my absence, thank you. I think I have seven pages of notes.
Yes, it was busy.
It was a long meeting with lots of important information, though. So to sort of summarize, um, you know, Carol mentioned the, the buses. Got very few issues, things are better. Um, there is a conference call scheduled with a parent who still has a concern. So just one?
Yeah.
What's that?
Really, just one.
No, so far, like, it's great. Been good. Let's see, so then Margaret spoke a little bit about um, their fire drill, and how it was an unannounced fire drill, where the fire department just arrived, and everything went um, even better than expected. There, the fire chief is working with the principals to make sure that when they schedule drills, that they're mindful of MCAS or difficult scheduling days, and weather, whatnot. So Guy was talking about the middle high school, and they also had successful fire drills. Um, they were talking a lot about all of the new safety protocols and um, trying to think.
I took up most of the meeting, so that tells you how, how much he had to talk about.
Right, I think, you know, I think the, the feel was that all of these new um, protocols are good, but it's a little overwhelming, uh, with, you know, constant alarm, or not alarms going off, but you're, you're getting lots of emails, that this door is open, you know, oh, this, we got this email from. So trying to um, sort of streamline that and see who's gonna be responsible for what, and to not overwhelm, but the feel was, all of those things are working. Um, they need to set up Alice drills. We purchased two more of the lobby guards, or not lobby guards, lobby.
It was supposed to be lobby guards, raptor.
Right, so we purchased two more for each school, because during busy times. Oh, if it's like a queue? Yep, so that was helpful. We were talking about how security is very tight when the kids are in the school. The See Something, Say Something app. I mean, they really have, there apparently was one life safety concern that came up with that, and I believe that was addressed and handled.
Yep, right away.
Right away. What was the um, the attendance of the, the parent meeting for that?
Oh.
Not a lot.
Fifteen, maybe? But.
It was on, on Georgetown cable TV.
Yeah, I've lost track of which one we taped, so.
Right, I think there were more like fifteen in, with the vaping and tobacco, but I think there were like two.
It was, yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't very well attended. That's right, I, I think it was.
Yeah. Maybe somebody else, maybe. Well, there were games at night, too, and it was five-thirty, which I thought, that was early.
But I think, you know, our goal would be, we, I gotta figure out a better way to, uh, maybe we can post those somehow on the link on the website or something, and that way, you know, people don't have to go searching for it. It's kind of just there.
Right.
Because it was a good presentation.
And it is available.
Yeah.
We just have to make it easily available to people.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the things that apparently is happening, the door alarms are going off in the night, but the doors aren't ajar, so gotta work something out to make sure that's calibrated correctly.
Mike has been, he's aware of that.
Right, um, so gaggle is up and running, and again, that tracks the email, school emails, not personal or personal phone numbers or anything like that. They were testing the vape system in the bathrooms, and they tried to spray some, something, and um, it did not set it off, but actually taking like a folder and waving it in front did set it off. So they marked that as like a false positive, and so it's teaching the system, I guess, but overall, they have it has gone off when vaping has occurred, and that's been.
Yeah, one of the custodians, when they were testing out like these, 'cause people were saying, oh, you know, the kids can spray the, you know, the cleaner, and, and that's what would set it off. That didn't, that didn't set it off, but one of the custodians vaped and shh, right away, it went off, so we know it works. We're, we're in the process of sort of calibrating the sensitivity of it. You know, but it definitely works. And that really just became available in the last couple of weeks. So any kids who thought, oh, you know, it, it, there was not, those things weren't working earlier in the month of September.
They weren't turned on.
They weren't turned on, now they're turned on.
Right. Um, so teachers are doing bathroom duty, and so they're, they kind of know who's going in, who's coming out. Although not all bathrooms are covered because of not enough people. Uh, SRO reports. Right, well, they're, they're doing, they're doing it.
They're doing duties, but they're, they're not all, they have to sometimes be targeted to study halls and other things, so. You can't have kids in a room without any adult.
So, from SRO reports at Pembroke, everything seems to be off to a really smooth start. Officer Olchewski started the sixth grade curri- curriculum, so he's doing some teaching there. At the middle high school, there seems to be um, some challenges with the seventh grade, and they're doing some things uh, to work her out, work that out.
Oh, while, while Cheryl's on the SRO, I meant to ask you that on the thing here. So the SR, so with the, the chief and I have been working on this memorandum, and we'll understand anything I told you about that. And so when that is signed, I, I wanna bring it to you. So when he and I were talking about it, we kind of tentatively put that on for November fifteenth, if there's one meeting in November. The challenge is that that meeting has to be on the second floor. So, the thought was, at, you know, 'cause we had some board of selectmen, people talking about, well, gee, you know, we'll do, I wanted to do this memorandum thing, but then I said to the chief, can you and the SROs come and talk about, you know, what you're doing? Yeah, but it wouldn't be televised. I mean, we could post it, and it would be seen, but if you wanted it to be televised, if that was super important, we would have to move it.
We, we could still televise it, it just wouldn't be live.
It's not live, that's right. We will televise it, but it's not live. So if that's not important.
It's okay, I think as long as it's televised.
All right, perfect, okay. Okay, that's great. Thank you, Cheryl, sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I mean, basically, everything. Uh, Officer Lieutenant Hatch talked a little bit about some of the buses complaining that cars were passing when the lights, and they did a little investigation, and apparently, you couldn't see the, the bus lights, or, or the van, the vans, so that was why that happened, and that's pretty much.
Yeah, was it, yeah, okay.
I left out a few little details, but.
I know, you, you did a good job, Cheryl.
It was a lot there. Well, thank you. Um, budget and finance, Matt?
We met before the last meeting.
Okay.
We won next week.
Next week, next Friday.
Next Friday. What about the blizzard bags?
We had our first meeting on Sunday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Wednesday.
See, none of us can remember. Earlier in the week, Tuesday, I think.
Tuesday, yes.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, we had Monday off, right?
It was very much a first meeting, but it was a good, good start.
Yeah. So what are you gonna meet again?
Uh, two weeks.
Next.
Uh, next week.
Next Tuesday.
And so who, was that with the whole group?
No, it was moved to Wednesdays.
Or next.
Was that with the whole group, the teachers and?
Yep.
Yeah, there were nine or ten of us.
Oh, good, parents?
One parent.
One.
Oh, good. Let's move to Wednesdays, I believe.
I have Wednesday, the seventeenth, at three thirty.
Yeah, that's Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's move to Wednesdays.
So negotiations, uh, I know they reached out.
They did, yeah.
To, um, schedule a meeting, so we need to do that.
And, you know, we don't have to do it right away, but we don't wanna forget about negotiations for those state events.
Okay.
So. All right, um, Pam?
Public relations, Suzanne, a fan, not a thing.
No, we didn't meet, right? We're so good.
We are communicating.
We did have our first meeting, um, last week for the, um, boosters, so that was, that was really good.
Oh.
Yep.
So, when we were at the recent Weston football game, they have a big booster's presence.
Oh, well, really?
And they were selling the night of, um, um, clothing, you know, paraphernalia, sweatshirts and things like that, and they were selling.
They were selling it.
They were selling them, and I just don't know why we can't do that, our store, the, that school store is closed.
Yeah, I know.
More often than it's open, and this is a great time to sell it, and let the store get a small percentage of it, but this is a great time to sell it cause you'll have parents buying it and the kids and, you know, I just, I saw it in action and items were being sold.
Do we have an online presence?
We have, but.
We do, but this is a here and then and I'm gonna walk away with it, you know, and I just thought, wow, I took a picture of it and I sent it off.
Yeah.
To, um, Shannon to say, this is, might be a great idea, but it's another way to generate some money.
Some funds, yeah. Especially if it's a cold night and yourself.
So the items were sweatshirts, um, sweatshirts, T-shirts, hats, um, you know.
Jambie pants?
Did you check, were the prices like?
I didn't check the prices, um, but, you know, like I said, I did take a picture of it.
Okay, did they have like, um, those magnets for your car?
I would say most of it really was the sweatshirts.
Most of it was sweatshirt, yeah.
You know, sweatshirts and stuff, but I, I would think you could put anything out there.
Stadium seats.
Um, you know, just anything that people would, you know.
Yeah.
It's just the opportunity to sell something for the boosters to gain some.
Yeah.
Some water bottles.
Yeah, so we are meeting again on Wednesday and that meeting is gonna be basically an introduction to the committee of the, um, the athletic, uh, budget.
Right.
Just so the committee members can get a better understanding, because of course the first thing people say is, isn't it the seventeenth?
On when? We are meeting the seventeenth, which I don't know that I'm gonna be able to make, but I thought the budget was gonna be presented in November.
Oh, maybe you're right.
I can look at my notes, I can look at my rapids with me.
I thought the next one was, oh, the next meeting is to, um.
Bylaws, wasn't it?
Thank you, the bylaws.
Yeah.
And the, so they did, um, vote on a president, which is, uh, Shannon, vice president, uh, or treasurer is, um.
Oh, jeez.
Kelly Coy.
Kelly Coy.
Yeah.
I'm the secretary.
Yes.
Um, and there's two other positions that need to be filled, um, a media, um, person that will take care of all the media relations and the other one was a possible.
A large person.
Yeah, or a possible like vice president, thinking of making the media a vice president, so we need more people to wanna fill those positions.
We do.
Um, but we do have a great working group of people, dedicated people, and then Pam.
Yes. They're exciting, we'd like to expand it.
Pam is right, the following meeting, we will be introducing the budget, just so people can get a better under- understanding, because they, you know, the assumption of the community is that the user fees, which are, you know, expensive user fees, should be covering everything, we wanna give them an idea of.
Of what it does cover.
Of how.
Right. How, how much things cost.
Yeah, how, yes, how, uh, difficult it is to, um, maintain or to sustain that, that, um, revolving account, so I think that's gonna be a really good meeting, interesting, I think it will open people's eyes.
Where the money's going. Yeah. Yeah, we should advertise that.
Yeah.
You know, pretty.
Cause that'll highlight why we need money.
I, I have, uh, November first, um, so the seventeenth will be for the bylaws.
But I have to look at my book, my book will tell me exactly what the agenda was, but I have put November first as.
Oh, I don't have it on November first.
Okay.
I have November seventh, Wednesday, so Wednesday night, cause remember we were gonna do like, um, the first Wednesday of the month.
Yes, seven, yeah, okay, wait a second here. That's right. We were, yeah, trying to predict, yeah.
Yeah, so there are a lot of great ideas, a lot of, you know, a lot of things that were passed around, so I, I really hope that, um, under Shannon's leadership it will re- reiterate itself, um, and, and help the, the budget, have a little breathing room. I'm excited for it, and the rec center, uh, when is the next meeting for that?
Uh, so we're, we're just catching up with the Newburyport people, we haven't got a meeting scheduled yet. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna have to think very, very, setting it up is not a problem, I'm, I'm confident we could do that. We're gonna have to really think creatively about, you know, getting some funds to just, even if it's just to have somebody to sort of
Yeah.
kick it off, because, and, and maybe the different groups that are working would all sort of throw, they, actually, one of the guys from Park and Rec, the gentleman that, uh, does some programming for them asked to come and meet with me on, I don't know, tomorrow or the next Friday, but, you know, I'm hoping that maybe we can do a little bit of sharing, you know, at least initially, um, because from what I'm hearing, which we'll talk about, is the, the town's very concerned about the budget this year. And so, you know, the idea of, gee, could we figure out a way to sort of get some money in the town to sort of support, you know, a, a position, even if it's a part-time position, I, I'm not sure this is gonna be the year that that's gonna be possible, but I, I think we can do something to get it, to get it up and running, cause it really is important.
And possibly through Georgetown cares to put some in, we can, you know, have that conversation.
I mean, we've done all kinds of. PTA might put some in, like how, if, if we did it for the second half of the year, like, how much money would we need?
On Thursday.
And that's why we're looking at a, a budget, I mean, down the road, I really would love to believe there could be, you know, some attention at the town level to some of, if you charge a little fee, you can, you can also use your fee, that's how a lot of places do it, you know, they have little membership, like a hundred dollars a year or something, you can go unlimited amount of time, but you know how it is when you rely on soft money, right? So what's your break even point, like, how many people do you have to get to commit, you know, in order to?
Especially year one, when you don't know what.
Exactly, so, so that, we're, we're still committed to that, it's just, we've gotta work out a few logistics. So November seventh is the sports boosters, I'm gonna get that.
The sports boosters, that's an independent organization, correct?
It is, they will be in a five, five oh one secret.
Five oh one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, CPAC's the only one that's sort of not outside of the parameters of the district.
And that makes for an awkward, I'd be curious how Weston did it, because the school store is a school entity, the boosters is not, so they can't sell school store stuff like.
Maybe Weston doesn't have a school store.
Yeah, but maybe, but like I said.
Unless the boosters buy it and resell it, or, I mean, there's a way around it, but it's.
Or, or they, or they could give a percentage to the, the school store or something, you know, so if it's sold outside.
They could buy, they could buy it and resell it, why couldn't they do that?
No, cause it's a, it's a school property, they would have to buy it from the school.
So maybe they just, maybe they just go to another company.
They have to buy it from the school.
Yeah, or they sell it all.
Which is very easy.
Or maybe they don't have a school store, we don't know.
Or, yeah.
That's true.
It might not.
Yeah, so I'll.
They didn't have cheerleaders, so who knows? I just, yeah.
But they had sweatshirts.
They had sweatshirts, if it was a cold night, they got bought.
Okay, I think we're done for the, um.
Yeah.
For the meeting.
Well, just for the, the CPAC?
Excuse me?
CPAC update.
CPAC update, yes, yes.
Sure.
So I went to an incredibly.
I'm here with the, uh, chair of the CPAC, Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, and we have a trick or trunk event, uh, this, uh, Saturday and, uh, one of the things I wanna let you know is, uh, if we have to reschedule this through the weather, our rain date is Sunday, we will make that decision by nine thirty in the morning.
Okay. Is that, is that a prediction and a long rain forecast?
Uh, you know.
Yeah.
It depends upon, uh, which weather forecaster you listen to, as to what's gonna happen on Saturday. Um, so we have most of the participants' emails, so we'll, we'll do it, do it that way, we'll make phone calls. Um, so we will make that decision early in the day, though, cause it's gonna be a lot of work to, to reschedule, just so you all, wherever that.
Yeah, if you let me know, Tom, I can post it on our website.
Okay, hopefully, we're not going to, um, but.
But if you have to, we can post it on our website.
So while I'm here, I just wanted to, uh, thank our sponsors, Mighty Creek Animal, uh, Care Center, Bennett Construction, uh, Noonan's, uh, The George Home Improvements, our first sponsor, the Georgetown PTA, Towns and Energy, E- Energy, sorry, Alton Bay Blinds, uh, Representative Lenny Mara, uh, his opponent Christina Eckert.
Yes.
Georgetown Building Supply, Repairs Unlimited, TD Bank in Georgetown, the Pearly Preschool PTO, Georgetown Education Association, the Teachers Union.
Wow.
And Heidi Financial, this year we've already exceeded, just with sponsors, what we made last year, we're, we're around thirty-five hundred dollars.
What amazing job you've done reaching out, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
So thirty-five.
Uh, so the last thing is, uh, since I'm here, uh, uh, I'm just gonna pass this around, this is a, uh, not a final coffee, but all these are confirmed.
Oh, this is the schedule.
Of our training schedule, we are waiting, uh, some of you guys, so we're waiting to, uh, hear back, uh, from, uh, a few different presenters, we had a workshop this week, uh, uh, with Pamela Illy.
Which is fantastic, thank you so much for having that, organizing that.
Yeah, it was a very good workshop. This year we're having two, uh, workshops with, uh, Henry Oshewski, uh, on the Alice training, it's, uh, um, Concern of Special Ed Parents, uh, you know, uh, I think it's gonna be an ongoing dialogue and topic, um, some kids have a hard time processing that, um, I have a hard time processing the whole thing, to be honest with you, but if you have a learning disability, you, you, this, uh, opportunity for, um, misunderstanding, so, um, parents will have some discussion about that. Basic Rights Workshop, which we're required to do by law, will be with Laurel Collins, an educational advocate, on, uh, November thirteenth. Uh, Beyond Basic Rights, uh, December eleventh with Attorney, uh, Dan Proman, um, I predict that it will snow that day because it was canceled three times last year due to snow, but we'll see whether or not it happens.
But I did hear him last year and he is really excellent, I like, I like his way of presenting, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, he's supposed to be a tremendous presenter.
Very helpful, I think, to his, to the parents.
So, uh, yeah, we have an ongoing dialogue about the weather. Uh, Nightingab is, uh, coming back, uh, she's a neuroscientist, um, uh, does a lot of research with, uh, reading and dyslexia, she's, uh, very well known, uh, Caleb Hardy is, uh, doing a, uh, coordinating your special needs financial and estate planning. Uh, that's on, uh, February twelfth.
Is that new, Tom, that, you didn't do that last year, right?
We didn't do it last year, but we had a different group come in the year before.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Um, and actually, when, uh, two years ago, um, we had a workshop, he had, he scheduled one down the library, he, him and his brother, they went down the library the same night. So, uh.
That's the same night as the school committee meeting?
We, um.
Yeah, Thursdays.
Well, that's a Tuesday, they changed it, we changed our school committee meeting.
That's a Tuesday, yeah.
Oh, we changed it to Tuesday, that's right.
Um, Tiffany Hogan's coming back, she, uh, just published an article recently on, uh, understanding dyslexia in the context of developmental language disorders. Uh, she'll be here on, uh, March twelfth, uh, Tim Cinderlau is going to do an anatomy of a special ed case, this year we've partnered, I've invited Pentucket to come. He's gonna take two of the last, uh, cases that went, went before the Board of Special Ed Appeals in Georgetown and in Pentuck- Pentucket, and he's going to, um, uh, discuss the lessons that have been learned, uh, from those cases. Guiding ship on May, uh, fourteenth with Attorney, um, Hillary Dunn from the Disability Law Center and, and, um, the Alice training with Henry Oshewski in, uh, June, we have to schedule our Shiny Star Awards Ceremony. Uh, the school district therapists, uh, are going to present this year as well, that'll be at the, yeah, Pembroke School, don't have a date yet on that.
Okay, that's great.
Excuse me.
Very good.
Well, good luck with the, uh, trick or trunk, I hope the weather is cooperative.
We'll see what happens, it's all, it's all good.
It's all good, mm-hmm. It will be what it is, right?
Right, it'll be a fun day for the kids if it.
So thank you very much for, you know, slipping in here.
Oh, sure, thanks for coming.
Fight a cold to get through the, uh, my talk.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, all right, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight, uh, fifty-six, there's no reason for an executive session this evening, so.
Yes.
So moved? All in favor?
I haven't mentioned the post, is that, is that coming up?
Um, uh, yeah, well, on, on, uh, November eighth, we're going to, yeah, so I can.
Okay, November eighth, okay. You can talk about that next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Bye, Tom.